Hello, I'm Janet Anderson. I call to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, at 7:30 PM. So for everyone, the exit is the way you came in. The exits to my left are for emergency use only. In order to comply with the open meetings law, we must meet in person. Unfortunately, we don't have the capacity for the public to attend by Zoom, nor can we stream our meeting to YouTube, but we will post an audio recording of this meeting to the town website. Materials considered in this meeting are available in the agenda packet that's posted on the town website, and members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissborony.gov. Kirsten Conrad, our Planning Board Administrator, has confirmed that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. Joining me tonight from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, John Guzmanos, Charlene N. Delicato, Bruce Thompson. Paul Fusco cannot be here tonight, however, we do have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board and vote on any matters that come before us. We also have Council Judge Seabird. Our town planner, Jan Johannesen, is unfortunately unable to attend tonight. We do have Kirsten Conrad, and that's it. So with that, let's get going. The first item on our agenda is a decision on a, for calendar number 08-02 PB, JVG Estates, formerly the Popoli subdivision at Bluestone Lane, South Salem, New York. And this is a request for the release of a wetland mitigation bond. So in August, we asked Jan, at our August meeting, we asked Jan to inspect and Judd to prepare the resolution. Jan is not here tonight, but he did send us an email saying that he had looked at the plantings and they were in good condition. So with that, I'll ask Judd to go through the resolution.
Yeah, this is a resolution. It's similar to three prior resolutions the board has approved. When the subdivision plat was signed, there was a bond posted with, or performance security posted with the town. This was for wetland mitigation, so this is something that is solely within the province of the Planning Board, as opposed to project infrastructure, which involves the interaction with the town board. The initial bond was a little over $37,000, and as the work was completed, and then with successive growing seasons and a success rate with the plantings, it's sunset over time. This is the last, this is the last of the performance security we hold. As Janet said, we received the email today from Jan with photographs. He has confirmed that the plantings passed muster, and with that, this resolution will release the final $5,615.40 held by the town to the project developer.
And I should have mentioned that this resolution had been distributed to the board, so they had a chance to look at it. So if there's no questions or discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve that.
I saw move.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Charlene, seconded by John. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So I'll sign that. Do you want me to keep all the resolutions here until we're done tonight?
Sure.
There'd be one more.
And I neglected asking anyone in the audience if they want to sign up to speak for the two public hearings we're about to have.
So the process is, as we, if you want to speak on the public hearing, just sign your name and it will, you'll be asked to speak. Okay, the first public hearing we have is calendar number 10-15 PB, calendar number 20-17 WP, calendar number 05-17 SW. This is Lewisboro Commons, or Wilder Balder, at 100 Beekman Lane in Goldensbridge, New York. And this is the request for the final release of the apartments' construction performance bond. So in August, we met to consider this, and we requested delegation from the town board because, as Judd just mentioned, this is an infrastructure performance bond. It was considered at their September 9th meeting, and while we don't have this, we have the copy of the resolution but not signed and stamped from the town clerk, but we did get a written note from the town supervisor that they had basically delegated this to us, agreed that we could have a public hearing and handle the matter. So with that, the public hearing is now open on this, if there's anyone who has any comments about the request from, to release the bond from Lewisboro Commons.
I haven't had anyone sign up.
No one signed up. And we, just to confirm, I don't believe we've received any email or mail written information about this. Okay. So I guess I'd look for a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion that would close the public hearing.
Second.
Second from Charlene. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Judd did prepare a resolution on this, so maybe you can...
Sure. So this, like the preceding resolution, is for the final release of performance security. This was security posted by Wilder Balder for the Lewisboro Commons project, for project infrastructure, which is why we needed to take the step of sending up the town board and getting its authorization to conduct the public hearing and release the performance security. The performance security here is in the form of bond. You recall that we, the board previously released a bond for the infrastructure upon satisfactory completion of the work, and under the, under the condition of approval, once that initial bond was released, 90% of the bonded amount was released. A new bond for a 10% retainage was posted with the town. That's approximately $108,000 in bond security. A year has passed. Keller Sessions has reviewed or evaluated the infrastructure. It's in acceptable shape, so with that, the resolution provides for the release of that bond.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution.
I saw move.
And, Bruce seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I should have mentioned again that this had been distributed to the board, and they had a chance to review it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a, thank you. Is a calendar number 23, sorry, 29-23 WP, calendar number 09-23 SW. This is for the Bernabeu vacant land at 96 Post Office Road in Waukeahuck, New York. It's an application for a new well, septic, and house. And because I believe some people have signed up for this, I am just gonna say that we will have a, the applicant will give a summary of the project, and then we can get comments, but please direct comments to the board. We won't have a lot of dialogue. We just don't want to have people in, that might be here to make comments, talking directly to the applicant, or vice versa. So it goes through us. And because there are audience members here to see this, I'm gonna suggest you turn that, we've seen this, turn it a little bit more, okay, so that the audience can see it. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Peter Scott. I'm an architect and engineer representing the applicant at 96 Post Office Road. Depicted on a board to my right is a parcel. It's 4.04 acres in size. That is an area which represents the disturbed areas on the project. I have an overall site plan, if anyone's interested, which depicts the rest of the property, which is basically wetlands. Through that line, segmenting that drawing before you, that's a wetland line, which is flagged and approved by consultants for the particular project. What we're doing is, we are developing a single-family home on the property, and depicted on that piece, on that picture of the following. There's a 1,700-square-foot footprint house, which is in the dark, umber color, brown color, in the center of the property. Then there's an outside decking, which is shown in a lighter brown, and the two green squares behind that represent some stormwater management treatment, which consists of planters, infiltration, pardon me, filtration planters on the project itself. Single-family driveway access is the parcel on the right-hand side to an existing opening and a stone wall. In the lower portion of the property are septic fields. We are depicting on that picture both the primary and the reserved septic area for this project, but we're only building the primary, and this is approved by Westchester County Department of Health. The project also contains a well on the far-right side, and that is the extent of the disturbance. So out of 4.04 acres of property, we're disturbing 15,000 square feet, and that includes some mitigation, which is extensive on the property. But to clearly look at what we're gonna create at the end of this project is the street trees will remain intact along Post Office Road. The green area, which is a highlight for you, is a tree line, and that's the extent of our, our cutting of the trees. And again, that green line would only extend through the primary. So the wooded lot will predominantly remain, except for a small portion in the east northeast corner, which is shown on the map before you. So we have worked extensively with the town, and we appreciate their help with this, but what we've done is we've minimized, to the maximum extent possible, the footprint and disturbance on the lot. By minimizing it, what we've done is we've gone from a one-story house to a two-story house, as I depicted, which again, has a 1,700-square-foot first floor plan, which happens to include a garage as well, which is 600 square feet. There's a two-story development on this, but to mitigate the sightline, the property does slope downward from the roadway, so our two-story structure, with all those improvements, are actually down the hillside from the road itself. As one drives along the Post Office Road, past this particular parcel, what you're gonna see is a lawn in front, just the primary area of the septic, and then right behind that will be the house set down on the hillside, following the graves. And on that map, there's big numbers on the left-hand side, and they depict what the elevations are. So we're at 484, the roads at 492, so we're almost eight feet below the elevation of the road with our house, the first floor of the house. So that, we attempted to do that, again, to mitigate visually disturbance on the site. So when I mentioned that we have a lot of plantings proposed, we have put together, To mitigate the upland disturbances with our proposal, we've put together an extensive planting plan, and it consists of two various components. On the northern part of the property, which happens to be the upper portion of this map, we're putting in a line of buffer trees with a neighbor, with an agreement with them, and we're providing him a buffer on that portion of the site. As we move through the property itself, again, we're not disturbing only where the house is and the septic is, but the remaining area of the property to the south of us has over 300 plants and bushes proposed, plus some large trees. Even though it's heavily wooded, it's extensively planted. And then beyond our property, in the wetlands itself, we're also putting additional wetlands and plantings. In fact, we're putting three specific zones of plants. Each one is, has been selected for the, basically the wetness of the soil. Well-inplants in the well-inlet itself proper, which we're planning. We have an intermediate area, Zone 2, which is pretty much at the distance from the house from the road. And in the front of that, again, we have upland plants and bushes. These plants and bushes grow when they're in final form between 12 and 15 feet tall, so we're creating a very dense upland buffer planting, well-inplanting, and intermediate planting itself. On the road, there might be an issue with one of the oak trees, and we're proposing to put a substitute tree in for that. There's a couple oaks there, they're big, majestic, but they're not in very good shape. We provided pictures of those to the board, and again, we're supplementing one, which we think may or may not work out with our proposal. Again, all the construction activities will be confined within a designated buffer area, and in fact, to supplement this restriction of the buffer area, we're proposing a picket fence to be located between our house and the wetland line, and we have that as a permanent barrier, so there's no migration of development of this project. It's heavily dictated and established within the fence line, which we have on the wetland side of the property. Beyond that, it's a standard subdivision. We have adequate site distances, the road access is meets code, the driveway is gonna be Grass Creek, which is a porous material, allowing infiltration into the ground. Again, the stormwater management facility is in place, collecting all the runoff, and all the disturbed areas are collected and treated. And again, all the non-disturbed areas in the upland are extensively planted, as described before. Again, the town's seen all the plans, reviewed them substantially, and we're gonna put a bond in place for planting the plants, to ensure that they're there and they're germinated for a period of three years. We're putting deer fence around the entire property to make sure the deer don't enjoy a free lunch on our behalf, and so we're gonna protect it and make sure that the plants will be, will be working and functioning in their current state. We also have a buffer monitoring and maintenance plan we've implemented. It's on one of the drawings I do, with hard copies with me, if anyone's interested. And that basically, we're gonna have every, twice a year, for a three-year period, we're gonna have biologists revisiting our site, making sure the vegetation is doing well. We are, with this program, we're guaranteeing 85% survival rate, so we're not just throwing seeds out in the woods and hoping for the best. It'll be monitored carefully with our maintenance plan, and so what you see on the plan, you'll see in three years, five years, 10 years, it'll be maintained by my client. And that's it.
So I would think that maybe some of the neighbors might, if you have architectural drawings here, just to give them a quick, quick view of what that would look like as well?
Sure. Okay. If you mind, if I just speak from here, it's a little easier to move the paper.
Okay, sure.
So basically, the first floor, oh, first floor, here we go. First floor for the neighbors is, we've brought a garage right here, a planter, a planter, and a small, narrow house, which basically is about 1,200 square feet net after we have our garage. You know, large deck to the south side, which again, is buffered and treated by our second planter, filtration planter. The building proposed is a contemporary barn, and basically, what it looks like is we kept all the colors muted. It's set down on the hillside, and basically, it's a grave and outdoor with windows punched into that core, but it looks like a barn. Our intention is to kind of make it a vertical-sized, gabled roof with only glass, large glass portion facing the north, and a little bit to the south. The portion of the property which faces to the wetland, again, is pretty much symmetric. Again, it's a barn complex house, again, an open size, both on the south side as well, facing the deck. So when you drive by the house, you're gonna see toward the road, just a very simplistic elevation with windows poked into it, like you're driving by a barn. That was kind of the intent of it. And then the last area, look at the view. So our driveway is Grass Creek, and this view to the north, again, is buffered by trees. We planted out of property line, and all you're gonna see from the north side is a garage door, basically. This is a very narrow footprint with a glass component above, facing north. And on the south, as I described to you, it's a full glass aside, facing the deck. And so that's what you're gonna see. We try to make it look like a modern, it's a simplistic modern, and basically, the barn symbolism is what we went with to sort of make it match up with the properties currently on the, on the, on the Post Office Road.
Thank you. Great. Okay, we do have a memo from Jan on this. I think it's looking for reviews, revised approvals from Westchester County Department of Health and DEP, and I think, you know, some details on the NOI and so forth, but it, I, I think the memo is probably not something you see insurmountable at all, right?
NOI, we filed, we gave you a full NOI just for your application, when you review your application. We filed a DEC NOI. We just don't put the sections about stormwater management in the NOI. We file it electronically, we give you a hard copy, and we filled in that portion of the site, just because you get some comment. We wanted to project to the engineer what the, how we meet the pre and post-development for the two-year, 10-year, 100-year storm, but technically speaking, per the New York State DEC, I didn't have to do any drainage, any stormwater all on the property. We're exempt from that, per their ordinances, and all we did was, we don't give them that portion, which we filled out for you. There's no changes on the form. We just don't give that data to DEC.
Okay.
So zero changes on that. There were some questions about the buffer maintenance plan, and I have a copy. It's on the drawings in SY1A, and for some issue, for some reason, they didn't see this, but this is a, a standard form we utilize on all our projects. It's been approved everywhere, basically, every town, municipality, and it's all on drawing SY1A, once we gave it to everyone.
Yeah, Kirsten is really the important person to get this, the most important person for the record.
It's on SY1A, but I put it in a different form.
Yeah, I did hear it was, I talked to Jan, and he did mention that it was on there in a slightly different place than he had expected, but he did say it was there.
We have correspondence from the DEP and DEC saying they're reviewing it, but they want approval, they want to make sure it's approved before they do the final step. It's currently valid, all the permits are valid right now. We're just giving to them an amendment of the approved plans to make sure we're compliant, and technically speaking, we've made the house 50% as large as before.
Right.
So the approvals are pretty much just a matter of getting something from the town, submitting to them, saying we're done with this, and they'll, they'll give it to us. And I've got the emails with me validating what their position is.
Okay, good. Any questions here before we open it to the public?
I was hoping I could have the owner of the property give a quick presentation in regards to why we're doing this.
Good evening. My name is Faustino Bernabo, and I'm here to share a little bit about my family and why we're so excited about the opportunity to build our home at 96 Post Office Road. My wife, Taylor, is a public school science teacher, and we recently welcomed our daughter, Coco, who's now eight months old. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight, but they are just as eager as I am about the prospect of making Lewisboro our home. We first discovered this beautiful town in 2021, and immediately fell in love with its charm, its community spirit, and the natural beauty surrounding it. I grew up in Mayapack, where my parents still live, so this area holds a special place in my heart. When we found the land at 96 Post Office Road, we knew this was where we wanted to raise our family. Over the past few months, we've worked closely with the town to adjust our plans to fit the guidelines and ensure our home would be a positive addition to the community. We've put a lot of thought and care into this process because we truly want to be good neighbors and active members of this wonderful community. Our dream is to create a home where we can raise our daughter and enjoy life as part of Lewisboro. We're excited about the possibility of contributing to the town and doing our part to keep it the special place it is. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, so we have some people signed up for this?
And if anyone else wants to sign up to comment on this public hearing, please let me know. Stuart Fishbender, please.
A question of more detail nature, not so much about the project as a whole. Deer fencing was mentioned, so one question is, the arbor body that we've agreed to put on the border, which is either 18 or 17, is 18 in agreement, 17 on the current plan. The deer like to eat it. I'm assuming that the, hoping that the deer fencing would actually go around our side to protect the lower trees on our property at 92. That was the first question. The second, that the neighbors were also curious about, is what is happening with the stone wall along the street? I know they have to change the openings and such, we're trying to find out what the status is, since several of us still have some of that stone wall in existence. The third question had to do more with the, we saw comments about a swell south of the driveway, carrying the water away into the wetland. We know the conditions that occur on both sides of the property line right now. Where the original Keller Sessions application, going way back, checked off that the water runoff, or that the project would have impact on neighboring properties. Our concern is where the contour lines meet, and they kind of join up before they go into our property, to make sure that there's no water flowing down, making the situation even worse. There is some ponding on our property that goes to their side, actually more on theirs than ours, that's in the wetland area, and we want to make sure that it's very, very damp and muddy back there, behind our seating area, which will make sure that we're not, that the design is not contributing to more water going on into those areas for both properties. That was the third question. And then the other question really has to do with, what's the sequence? We know they're getting the final approvals, the building department has to approve the What's the process going forward, when the tree removal, marking, layout, and when construction would probably start?
Okay.
Those are my questions.
Right, and I'm sorry, did, I don't know if we got your address on the tape.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sure we can address these as we go through.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's 18 trees on the plan. I'll check that. The stone walls on our drawings, we're, we advantageously established the opening in the, for the driveway, right next to where the stone wall opening is right now, but again, we have to make it a little bit wider because we have to be able to see a left-hand turnout here. So we're taking about 20 feet of wall. It's on the drawings itself to make that opening adequate enough, and we can't go too far, because there's a big oak tree right here, so we're kind of going right next to an oak on the property, so you won't, it won't be disturbing the lineage of the wall that much, because again, we're up against a big oak tree. The rest of the property's not, we're not touching any stone walls whatsoever. In fact, all of our work is below the stone wall. We're below the road surface on the entire sect. It drops away, and we're down, basically in the hole, below the wall itself. Deer fence, yes, deer fence is going around your, your buffer. We don't do any project without deer fence nowadays, those deer are pretty hungry. In terms of what's going on with drainage, it's a small portion of the property right here in the corner, that is the northeast corner, and our... And our grading is established in such a way that we're bringing the water down along the property line, and then it'll go into the stream, and the stream flows to the south. And we'd be more than happy to establish that swell with you for your review.
We just wanted to make, we just wanted to make sure that's all.
Okay.
And again, beyond any drainages these have provided as well, so that would help us and assist that. And that's it.
Yeah. And so the question on sequence, and unfortunately, we don't have either the building inspector or the town planner here, so I'm going to do my best. So the process is, we, assuming we give approval, we give, that we would approve this, and then there are a few final things that have to kind of get reviewed with the town planner. Then there's paperwork, we sign off some of those big milars like that, you know, and then they can go get a building permit. Some of it will depend on seasonality. There is a sequence of construction that has been provided to us, but I think you're asking sort of more big picture. I don't know, do you have any sense of how long, once you get started, this might take construction? Again?
Yeah, what we're going to do is, we're going to basically, we have to flag the trees as part of our requirements to remove. We have to have a surveyor locate the property. We have a pre-application meeting, both with the New York City DEP and the town engineer, and any neighbor who wants to come along. And at that meeting, we basically have a flagged limited disturbance line, and we walk through all those components. Our goal basically is to get the foundation if we can this year. We're, it's getting close. So we have filed everything with other agencies to get their renewals with depicting the new footprint, and at that point in time, we will start construction based upon issuance of a building permit. The plans are ready to go. Again, I just get to take care of some paperwork from these other agencies to solve this. We have to post a bond. The bond has to accept us, another thing that takes some time. But with all those, stop, one more thing. During construction of the project, every, twice a week, we have to have a certified roads control inspector on the site. And so we file reports that go to the MS4 agent, which is the town engineer, and we file them with DEP as well. And DEP will be coming here probably about once a month, and we meet with them on every project that we have. So not only is our construction process taking place, but we have, we're monitoring all roads control on the project. In terms of tree planting, though, we missed a deadline for planting trees, and they'll probably be next year, like March or April. We start working our way from this side toward the project itself. The last thing we build on the project, while after the house, pretty much the foundations in and all that activity, we'd be building the septic system last so it doesn't get contaminated by any construction, et cetera. So we have a whole bunch of steps in the process. I forgot to mention one thing. Once the trees are flagged, we have to notice the town that we're taking the trees down, and that's under their supervision as well. And we'll be, we'll be taking the logs off-site, chipping the upper branches, and the stumps will be waiting, especially in the septic area, until we start construction. So it's got, there's, I leave the secrets of construction as well, but it's, we have to follow all these various regulations, and it'll be followed through.
Yeah, so one of the points that he made in there was saying the MS4. So we are in a special area that pays a lot of attention to stormwater and runoff, in part because we're in the east of Hudson area that feeds New York City. And so there's extra inspections that happen because of that. Okay, do we have anyone else up to talk?
Anyone else who wants to comment on this matter?
Okay, and again, we have not received any written comments on this, right?
Since the public hearing opened now.
Okay.
Motion, we'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
Seconded by Charlene. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so do we think we heard anything from the public that would say that we think something needs to be addressed? It sounds like the deer fencing, but that's not a, not a substantial item, so that might not have been going around the arbivide, will now go around it? If it, if it wasn't before, I don't, I have to admit, I didn't look at that.
It does.
Yeah, so, but we did get a resolution that would approve this, so do you want to run over that?
Sure. Taking over Jan's typical role. So a resolution approving a wetland activity permit and a storm, town stormwater permit has been prepared, distributed to the board. Latest revised version was distributed earlier today. It is an eight-page resolution. It begins with what I'll characterize as sort of standard form, whereas recitations identifying the property at 96 Post Office Road, identifying the owner. Record owner is W Design, Inc., and Mr., I'm going to mispronounce your name.
Bernabo.
Bernabo, yes.
Bernabo, excellent.
Has been on the point with regard to the corporate owner, description of the property, and description of the proposed development, a two-bedroom dwelling with an attached garage, garage with paved driveway, septic system, potable well, and associated stormwater Indicates that the onsite wetlands have been delineated and confirmed by KSCJ, the town's wetland consultant. Confirms that all proposed development is either within the wetland proper or within the wetland buffer. Continues to recite approvals that will be required from outside agencies. This includes County Department of Health, an approval, as Mr. Scott indicated, has been issued, but it must be amended based upon changes to the house footprint and site layout. Confirmation that a town stormwater permit is required due to the level of disturbance. Confirms that a DEC Speedy's general permit for stormwater discharges will be required. Indicates that the applicant has obtained an individual residential stormwater permit approval from the city DEP. The proposed driveway will require a sign-off from the town highway superintendent. That'll be a condition of approval. CAC reviewed this, conducted, planning board conducted a public hearing this evening. It was properly noticed. We received from Mr. Scott the notice materials, including the mailing and the green cards this evening. Public hearing was properly opened. All interested parties were afforded an opportunity to be heard, and it is closed. With that, the resolution goes on to actually take specific action. The first is to classify the actions as type-two action under SECR. Type-two actions are categorically exempt from further SECR review, so there's no necessity for issuing a determination of significance. Makes recitations under the town code, the Wetland and Watercourses Chapter, Chapter 217, that the planning board has considered those factors set forth in the town code with regard to the issuance of a wetland permit, including the criteria listed in 217B, and that the planning board has determined that impacts to the affected wetland and wetland buffer are necessary and avoidable and are minimized to the maximum extent practicable. Further finds specifically that the wetland permit application is consistent with the provisions and policies of Chapter 217, and therefore approves that wetland permit, specifies the plans prepared by PW Scott Engineering and Architecture. And then, again, standard form recitations or resolution clauses as to the fact that all work must be done in accordance with the permit, sets forth when the permit, the wetland permit, will expire, two years from the date of the adopted resolution. And then goes on to further grant the town stormwater permit, which will expire upon completion of work and be valid for a period of two years from the date of resolution, unless extended. We then get into the conditions that are attached to the approval. I'd just point out, the first set of conditions are conditions that must be satisfied before the plans, as Janet indicated, the milars are signed. A lot of these are really standard form, really relating to the content of the plans and just making modest revisions, as noted by KSCJ. As I mentioned, amended county health department approval will be required, as will the driveway opening permit from the town's highway super. The highway superintendent, as Mr. Scott indicated, there will be a wetland mitigation bond required for a three-year period, very similar to the one for JVT that we just dealt with earlier. There is a requirement that a license agreement or other form of agreement acceptable to me and the town planning consultant have to be prepared between the applicant and the owners of 92 Post Office Road, which are Mr. Fishbein, and I'm going to mess up. The recitation recites providing for the installation and maintenance of the arbivide to be planted. I would propose that we also include in that and associated deer fencing.
Okay.
Since that. And I can make this change. In that, the agreement will provide for the applicant owner to have perpetual access to maintain and replace the plantings as necessary. Again, as Mr. Scott indicated, the applicant is going to retain a qualified professional to oversee the implementation of the wetland mitigation plan. All those details need to be provided. Satisfaction of it and demonstrate coverage under the DEC Speedy's general permit. And again, the rest of these conditions are pretty pro forma. There are then conditions to be satisfied prior to the commencement of work. That includes a site visit conducted with the applicant contractor, building inspector, and town consultants, and I think Mr. Scott indicated that if neighbors want to participate, they'd be welcome.
DEP as well.
Conditions during construction are just access rights by the town. And then the final set are those conditions that need to be satisfied before a CFO is issued, and these, again, are all sort of pro forma. Conditions with regard to the submission of ASBILTS and the like. Conditions of the wetland activity permit specifies a planting period between April 1st and June 1st, or between September 15th and November 1st. Confirms that the qualified wetland scientist will be engaged to monitor the wetland mitigation, as we addressed. Talks about the three-year period. Prohibits the application of lawn fertilizer, except during the first growing season of the lawn. And that's it.
Okay, any questions by anybody? I think I'd look for a motion to approve this as amended.
May I ask?
Sure.
Is the amount of bonding in that resolution, are we going to? No, that, the amount of, the amount of bond will be based upon a written cost estimate to be provided by the applicant professional engineer. We've done it.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, that goes to Jan. Okay, very good. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution as amended.
And Bruce seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So do you want me to sign this or wait till?
I'll, I'll do it.
Yeah. Okay. Sometimes it doesn't slide onto the last page. So if you want to give that to, okay. Thank you all.
Well, I didn't end up on my face, so I guess I'm okay.
Okay, let me find our, the next item on our agenda is.
Could we ask that you?
Take it outside? We want, yeah. Want people to meet each other, but outside. Okay, the next item on our agenda is site development plan. This is calendar number 09-24PB, calendar number 19-24WP, calendar number 12-24SW. Villas at Vista at 920 Oak Ridge Commons, South Salem, New York. And this is the application for the construction of 12 housing units in building 9A and B, four of which were previously approved.
Good evening. Hi. Eberth Cross River Architects. We, I just wanted to update you quickly with a few things that happened this week. We went to the Accar and got approval from that without change. Materials that we were talking about is an asphalt shingle roof, the hardy board siding that you see throughout the site, and again, that stone face that we've used both on the veterinary building and also on Laurel Bridge. So it's the same, same materials that we're using on-site will match well. We are on the agenda for the ZVA next week, and hope for approval there. The one thing that we wanted to talk about was the fire chief again. Now, he says he spoke with Kirsten, so he doesn't need to write a letter.
Sorry. I, he had told me that he had written a letter, so I had sent something to you tonight. And did he do that, or?
And I sent it back to you, and his one-line email spoke about the driveway removal. Was the board wanting Vista Fire's reaction to the entire building?
I think, Kevin, it was, it kind of asked for, I don't know if they spoke, Kevin on the fire.
Oh, he's not here, so. Without a memo, I don't know.
Yeah, so, well, the memo that he sent, and this was, would have been probably before any discussion, is he was looking for, I thought it was both, both the sort of turnaround and the, you know, the ladder truck movement inside, and.
So that's from Kellard's office?
Well, we can.
Yes, the Kellard Session, yeah. And so, so that was, you know, I don't know. I mean, I think it would be good to get something, what did you get from the fire department? Just somebody said that the driveway is okay? No?
Driveway removal.
I think there were two separate issues. One was the turnaround, and then one was getting rid of the drive between the two. And our understanding was Kevin was going to write something up about that and wanted something from the fire department. Vista Fire Department, which, Kevin's not here, so you don't know whether that'll suffice or not, but I think that him saying that, then he can get, we can get more if necessary. I think the two of them should.
Seems a small item, but it's kind of holding stuff from it.
Yeah, we like to have the fire department happy. I mean, if they kind of say.
Wait a minute.
We've talked to them, we know they're happy, but we got to get that information to you, and we're having trouble going.
Yeah, I.
Anyway, so with regard to the turning radiuses, it's relatively simple. The diagram showed the truck body turning, but the wheels were not shown on the diagram. The wheels actually stayed on the pavement, but the truck body passed over the curb slightly on one of the diagrams.
Okay.
So it's a minor, minor thing. The other comment was having a truck, ladder truck access to the north of the building.
Right.
Now, we're taking out that parking lot, as you know, on the north side. Now, we're taking out that parking lot, as you know, on the north side of the building, and we're planting it heavily. So we don't expect a ladder truck to have to be there, wanna be there, but it could pull up to that, the A section of the building, the...
To the side there, yeah.
Right, right. So it could pull up there. Now, you say, well, what ladder needs to get to this, well, the, let me back up a little bit. The B building, there's only one story above grade at that point, so there's no access for a ladder there. They wouldn't use a ladder to get, to get on that building. The A building is two stories. However, if you're gonna get out the east side of that building, where you can't get with the ladder truck, it drops right down onto a roof just below the windows so high, and then it's a one-story drop to grade. So again, no ladder access would ever be used there. So we don't feel that there's any requirement for a ladder truck to get there, and again, without having the fire chief to say that.
Right, right, right.
But, you know, it just makes perfect sense that they're never gonna want a ladder truck outside. And he did say, we would fight the fire from the south side of the building, where they've got both the dry hydrant and the, and the water hydrant right next to the building.
And are these, remind me if these are gonna be sprinkled?
Yes, fully sprinkled building.
Fully sprinkled. So I don't know whether they exist today, but if not, you're gonna retrofit it and put it in perfectly.
Half the building does and half doesn't. We'll retrofit, except the whole building does.
Okay. All right. So I know this is sort of minor, but I saw some questions about numbering, and it made me think about mail for the, do you have like a mailroom set up or in the lobby, or how, or do, how are people gonna get their mail?
The post office is gonna want something on the outside that they, they're not getting out of their truck to put in there. So it's something, we right now have it in different areas of the shopping center.
Like those boxes?
We should, we should put on the site plan where the mail will be delivered, and we'll have 12 spots for it, and they'll be able to throw it. Just the same thing that we do with the townhouse, but that was this.
I kind of, I, when I saw the question about the numbers, I went, wait, how are they gonna, you know?
They won't, because they will not come in.
Okay, yeah.
So it's, it's something where they're gonna be, have to be able to pull up, which we'll be able to do that.
Yeah, okay. Did I have something else? Mailboxes. Oh. Remind me what we said about bikes and bike storage? Was, is it lobby, is it in our apartments, is it, I think you mentioned...
We went around a little bit. We have one out in front of the shopping center, and, correct me, if I don't think we ever actually...
Used it.
Did you finalize that?
Yeah. It is there, but, but nobody ever uses it. It's always empty. So, you know, do we buy another one and put it here where it's not gonna be used? Probably not. However, I think the question was, was more about e-bikes and storage inside. And what we said is, if there's a, if there's a need, there's plenty of room to do it. There's a large lobby in the design, plenty of room to put that room in. If there's a need, we'll do it. And that'll be a sprinkled, sprinkler, fireproof storage room, you know, if it's, if it's, if there's a demand.
Okay. So we did get a memo from Jan, who's not here, but I think one of the other things that he mentioned was a lighting plan and reminding you that we had asked about responses to the county planning board as well.
Yeah.
So, as well as trying to get something out of the fire department. So, okay. So you're going to the ZVA, you know, I'm, we could think about a public hearing, but I'd sort of like to make sure that we're all ready to go, that we open and close. So I, I don't know, do you wanna think about scheduling it now or wait until we know what the ZVA says and we get some of the final details here? So we can, whenever we open it, we can close it that night, hopefully, and not have to hold open.
At the last meeting, we were discussing it, we didn't schedule it for this meeting. Now that we know that we have zoning happening, we're hoping to schedule it for the next meeting, where we'll have a response from ZVA at that point, and that being the case, we should...
Obviously, if they turn us down, we'll, we'll be changing the...
Right, doing something else, right.
When is the ZVA meeting?
It's a week from tomorrow night.
Twenty minutes?
Yeah. And you think you can get the other things that Jan was looking for?
Yes. I've worked on first draft for both of those today.
Right. And I think there was something about the landscaping plan, too. But, I mean, yeah, so...
Well, he just hasn't looked at it yet.
Yeah, he, that's true. He hadn't said that. Okay, so...
Whatever it is with that, we'll take care of it.
I think we can.
Okay. So we'll set a public hearing for, remind me, October 15th? Okay.
Would there be a draft of resolution at that meeting as well?
I think we could ask for one. I don't know why, I mean, assuming, again, this all assumes the ZVA goes well and everything, but yeah, I would think we can.
If ZVA doesn't go well, everything changes.
Right, right. No, and I, I think the big thing is that we're gonna, yeah, we'll have to work with the ZVA administrator to make sure we get feedback quickly enough, you know, but we'll, we'll work on that. That's, that's us.
I'll twist Donna's arm.
And you get the conversation between the fire department?
Yeah.
Because I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be key to having...
Unfortunately, we can't control that.
Yeah.
That's the issue, so.
And should the writing go to Kevin, go to the board, go to?
It can go to both?
Yes.
Go to both?
As long as it goes to planning.
Yeah. Yeah, it should go to planning, for sure. And, you know, electrons are not that expensive, so sending it to two people is...
Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Yep.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda, thank you for being patient, is calendar number 22-23 WP, calendar number 02-23 WV. This is Merchan and Valencia Residence at 1324 Route 35, South Salem, New York. We did get some plans some time ago, and I think we just wanted to have a, come tell us what's happening and how's it going?
Yeah. I received a letter from Jan about the approval for the wetland approval and, and the plans, right? They expect the placey plans to, to change and to accommodate whatever the changes were. And that letter said that no changes will be made until I have a building inspection. I thought that the work was outside in the yard, but building inspection is like an other whole thing that, yeah.
We don't, yeah, I don't think we've seen that memo from Jan to you, so...
Do you have the copy?
Yeah. I thought everybody was copying, sorry. Yeah, they were sent on June, and I was just waiting for this to, I showed the application, and I was like, really? Bottoms and ceilings and decks?
I, I think it might be...
Maybe I'm confused, but...
Right, I don't know. I mean, I think maybe the building inspector had to make sure that, to the extent we did anything within the setbacks or something, but I, I am, I am unfortunately...
Are you just forwarding on?
And there's another Valencia in town, if there was a...
No kidding?
Care or maid? If it's about that house, I don't know.
Oh. Another Valencia? Those guys, those Valencias.
I don't, I don't think, unless, I mean, unless there's some question about the steepness of the driveway or the drop-off or something, but I can't, it doesn't seem like...
Because everything happens in the buffer, right?
Yeah, yeah. So because having the, it might be that you need an opinion from the building inspector, but I, I think it's hard to say that they, I don't understand why they would need to inspect the building, so...
You can't find it tonight? Can you send it to me?
Yeah, I have it here. So, so this is, I'll send it to you.
Prest activity. Responsible team, a building permit, unless the building inspector says it's not necessary. This is looking at the resolution or the permit.
Wetland permit?
The wetland permit.
Which is signed.
So I think the, you know, so it sort of said, go to the building permit, go to the building inspector and get a building permit unless he says it's not necessary. So, but I don't see anything else that really talks about...
Anything, any other inspection.
Other engineered walls over four feet?
No, no. Well, not in what I have here.
Not in the wetland, yeah. I am sorry that we can't really...
I just sent it to you, and then just, totally, I'm just confused about it.
It may be that Jan had like a concern about something.
It's below the permit, it's the, it's below the permit.
Condition five?
Yeah, it's condition five, yeah.
Yeah. Get a building permit.
So what is the...
Is it, is it for the wall?
I, unless he says it's not necessary. So this is not...
It's probably for the bolt, it's probably for the wall.
Yeah, I can't...
What else could it be?
The wall.
So what this means is you should, so our building inspector is not gonna be here.
Okay.
He's not here today or tomorrow, but I think they expect him back Thursday and then, you know, should be here next week.
Definitely Friday.
Next week, I'll be, I'll be going to, I'm off town from tomorrow, so I'll be next week.
Yeah. So if you go and, and say, do I need a building permit for this? I'm ready to, you know, he should have the plans, I think, you know, and just say, do I need one? And if so, what do I need to get one? I mean, I think that would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So I was right, it says, but, but building permit, yeah.
It's, yeah, but it's not in...
It doesn't say you need one, it's, you need to go to the building inspector and ask, do I need one?
And we could say that it's not necessarily for the house, I mean...
No, no, no. No, no.
The only thing is building is gonna be the wall.
He's just making sure that...
Yeah, that's what I would think, too.
It's all right, yeah, yeah. I understand that.
Yeah. So it might be that if the...
I think it's the wall.
If the wall is a certain height, they might want to have some...
The wall meaning they want the...
Retaining wall.
The retaining wall. So what, what sometimes they will come out and do is inspect it to make sure that the...
It's not gonna fall over.
Yeah, it's not gonna fall over, that it's been, it's been, got good foundation.
By, by just building from my, my, down, so, also, that's, that's the wall.
Yeah, right.
And you may very well say you don't need it.
Yeah, 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 okay.
But he's gonna look at it and talk to you.
No, I, I just, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion, and, you know, it took us a little bit of time, too, to figure out what that meant.
Yeah, haven't seen the property.
Yeah, yeah. So it is not, it is not to come in and inspect your house. It is, it's, his title is the building inspector, but what he needs is a permit for the, maybe for the wall, maybe.
I'm glad that I understood.
I'm sure Jan's just, you know, Jan's not in a position to make that call, and he's...
Right, so he references.
Yeah. It's protocol also.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, they have different jobs, and they, they respect each other.
What is his name?
Kevin Kelly.
Kevin Kelly.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, he's in the application.
Yeah, yeah.
Show the application, I'm willing.
Yeah, okay.
So much, thank you so much.
I, yes.
So once, once I get his approval, he's gonna do it on writing probably, and copy everybody, then, then...
Yeah, he'll either say to you, you need a permit, and they'll tell you what to do, or say, no, you don't need one, go on ahead, so, okay?
And your wetlands permit is signed, so if you don't need a building permit, you're good to go.
You can just start going.
I think you should also just ask him to reach out to Jan, so that Jan is aware that he's made a decision.
So we have an approval somewhere in writing or, or phone call, whatever.
Right. Great.
That's good. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm sorry that you had to wait for long for that, but this is good to...
No, it's good, it's good to know.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Hi. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 01-24 WP. This is the Wilson residence at 55 Benedict Road in South Salem, New York, and this is an application for an addition. Hi.
And you are?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Geronda from Bibbo Associates. How are you? Project engineer, here on behalf of the applicant. As you mentioned, project's located at 55 Benedict Road. It's for two small additions to the house totaling approximately 860 square feet, both located within the wetland buffer. There's a small addition on the rear of the dwelling, and then this is a new, the more significant addition on the western side of the property. We've received comments from KSCJ, pretty minor. There's two outstanding comments. One relates to a building department referral about the number of bedrooms and a health department review, which is pretty standard. This is a zero-bedroom addition, just to clarify that. And the other is regarding our wetland mitigation plan. So since the previous meeting, we responded to several of Calard's comments satisfactorily, and one remaining outstanding. We had some mentions about maybe some additional mitigation, where we had shown wetland mitigation seed mix, this hatched green area. It's a, it's an Ernst wetland mitigation seed mix. It's an obligate seed mix. It does contain some herbaceous flowering species, herbaceous perennials, some grasses, some grass-like species. We are limited in terms of area where we can plant trees here, because there's some pipes in the ground, there's an existing septic system, which we don't, you know, we don't want root intrusion in those pipes. I don't think the applicant would be opposed to maybe adding some shrubs or perennials, but, you know, generally, we'd still stay within this area along the edge of the wetland. It is lawn area now. It does frequently get saturated with the rains that we have. That's where the drainage is directed on this property, so I do think an obligate seed mix will do well there.
I mean, we do defer to Jan on some of this. I personally think the addition of some shrubs would be helpful.
Okay, sure.
You know, and...
I'm gonna defer on that one, because it's not my, yeah, I don't...
You, I, and then I think the other thing he sort of talked about is maybe some kind of delineation. I don't know whether that would be, sometimes it's like a...
A limited model area or...
Yeah, like a split rail fence or a couple of boulders or something to sort of say...
Don't touch this.
Don't turn this back into lawn. I mean, and no, it's not really, you know, accidentally, people don't, you know, they have, I had a friend that carefully planted this whole wildlife, wildlife meadow, right? And they had their landscapers come in and they mowed it just like it was lawn, and, you know, had a, but anyway, so, so I think if you could do something that sort of says, here's a demarcation, I leave it up to you what that would be, but, and, and maybe a couple of shrubs, I think that would be nice.
Okay. That being said, is that something that we could handle with our office and KSCJ?
Well...
Handle that administratively?
I think so.
I, I'm ready to say, and I did talk to Jan about it, and he thought it could, he would be okay, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so in that case, we need a motion to make it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we move this to administrative.
I second.
Oh, oh, they're fighting over...
Go for it.
Bruce wants to second.
Bruce, okay, Bruce seconded. All right. Any further discussion?
We're all into this.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is now, I think, with the agreement to try to put a couple of shrubs and do a little demarcation, we're fine with it going admin, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and good luck with this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Don't mess.
Okay.
Do you have a score? Do you think we're at five more?
All right. Okay. The next item on our agenda, calendar number 26-24 WP, calendar number 17-24 SW. The Gorski vacant land currently 331 Smith Ridge Road, South Salem, New York. Application for a well, septic, and house. Hello?
Good evening. My name is John Malazek. I'm the engineer for the Gorskes.
Okay.
Okay, and then if you remember, we came, we were here last, last month, because we talked more about what happened before and not what was happening, so we're gonna do that. During the, the time, the power planner came to the site, and also we did some tests for the stormwater site. We did find that there's still a little wetland, and which did not change from what was done before in 2008, so we started from that. And according to the letter from, that we received from Jan, also says that he, he doesn't mind having the, the planting that was approved before for which we still have a bond that the owners have placed with the time.
Right.
The only thing different then was from the original plan that we're doing is the, there is a deck in the back of the house, and this slopes down, so there was, the foundation we were going to stick out even before, but now it still does, and there was no way, people being outside from the first floor, so there, there is a couple of columns of that within the setback.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what, and we did get an approval from the health department, which was sent it to the office, and the DOT for the driveway also gave a verbal approval that I sent the email, the string of email that she sent, and of course, we don't have, the owner don't have a contractor, she, they want the contractor to be the co-applicant of the DOT permit. Other than that, and there is some items, engineering items that we have to clear up with, with Jan and the other engineer, but other than that, that's what, I don't know where to go from here other than correct the items that the engineer did.
Yeah, so we do have a memo from Jan, and I'm, I'm going to really summarize it as, you know, he's got some comments on the walls at the entrance and worried about site view and, you know, that.
Yeah, I saw that, but the.
And then there's quite a few stormwater kind of comments about.
Yeah, I saw all that.
Culver, yeah, I mean, but just so everybody hears, we're all talking about the same. So there's, there's some stormwater, lots of stuff that, I mean, lots of.
It's a little thing.
Lots of things on stormwater, but nothing, so I also think that this could be go admin if the board agrees. Okay. So what we, what we're going to do is, we have to make a motion and do this, but our intent would be to say, you don't have to come back and see us again, you work with Jan, he'll get you the wetland permit and the stormwater permit and make sure things, you know, he'll kind of go through the details with you, but if that all works out, you don't have to come back to us, no.
Okay, because I did look and there's stuff that could easily.
I mean, there's, yeah, it's, it's a sort of a long memo, but it's a lot of little things.
Little stuff, yeah, they're picking sometime, you could say.
Well.
Some people, some people could say that, some people say, no.
Very important little net, but you know, you, but you make Jan happy and you're, you're good with us.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't use that term.
Well, you know, there was a saying, is that a lot of nothings.
A lot of nothings.
Killed a donkey.
Yeah.
You know, you put something on it, this is nothing.
Right, right.
This is nothing, nothing, nothing was allowed.
Right, right. The straw that broke the camel's back is.
Yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, yeah, same thing.
Said it a different way.
You want a motion?
We don't have a camel's.
I make the motion.
All right. Charlene's making the motion that we move this to administrative.
I'll second it.
And John second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night. And good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. So we have a couple of discussion items. One is scheduling a special meeting to discuss the proposed zoning amendments. So we had anticipated that we would have them referred last, on September 9th. We're now expecting them to get referred to us on October 15th. We talked about setting up a meeting. I think it was a special meeting, but I think we really need, it'll be after the, we have to do it after the 15th, which happens to be the date of our next meeting.
Right.
And I think I'd like to get Paul's calendar, so let's do it at the next meeting.
Can I just, as an update, so the comp plan was adopted.
Yes.
And all of the code provisions that were vetted by the steering committee, they're, they're being reformatted into local law format. We're doing that and.
Oh, you're doing it, good.
Yeah, and it.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it's, I tell you, it's taking time, one, to just make sure everything's getting placed, but also just, and this isn't, thank God I'm not doing it, it's the, just the, it's just the mechanical task of like.
It's a lot to do.
Format, format, yeah.
Tell me, I did it for years.
So we're a little behind schedule.
Yeah.
So we, I was before the town board.
The indentations and the.
Last, last Monday and advise them, we'll have it, we anticipate having everything ready for introduction at the first town board meeting in October. The other issue just that was discussed, if you're not aware of it, the battery energy storage system provision is being tabled.
Yeah.
And what has really kind of triggered this is like, like Domino's, it's, yeah. Mount Kisco is, Mount Kisco has a very large one proposed on, if you know where Grand, the Grand Prix, if you go down 117 and you make that, that bend and there's that industrial property back here, the diamond properties, there is a very significant like tier four storage facility that's proposed there. And it was filed and Mount Kisco had concerns about being behind the regulatory curve and also there are concerns about fire suppression and fire safety. So they adopted a moratorium. The governor actually appointed a, a committee to look at this, all of this from a fire standpoint and, because there are revisions that are going to be made to the state fire prevention and building code to address these facilities. So Mount Kisco wanted to kind of hold. And you know what happens when that, you know, now Bedford did it.
Yep.
Carmel has one, they've done it, and not that the town board is poised to adopt a moratorium because we, an application hasn't been filed, but I think Greg is likely to just have one ready. And in the meantime, they want to just look at that piece. So that, that's going to be extracted from the, from the code amendments that we're going to see on this round.
From the rest of this, I mean, but we've got enough to look at.
We've got enough to look at, yeah.
How long, how long is, do you think that the state's going to take on this?
I.
Because they, they don't work fast.
Yeah, they don't work fast. I, I don't know, and, yeah, yeah.
I stand by that statement though.
All right. So, okay, so, so I think, I mean, I think we still, I, I hope people agree, I mean, I think there's enough that's coming that we really do want to have a special meeting, but we should have it.
Have everybody, and I think Jan, and Jan as well.
Yeah, to schedule and make sure that we have all the dates. Okay, so we'll do that.
At our next meeting.
At our next meeting. I don't know how quickly the, the public hearing will happen after that, but they will have to wait for our, our comments to, to come, to come back, okay?
And they're going to refer to the county and that's going to take a little while, I think, given the scope of.
Right.
What's proposed.
It's, it's, there's quite a few, quite a few changes.
And then looking at them in local law, you know.
Yeah.
It's going to be different too.
Yeah.
I mean, just to read through them is going to take us a while. Okay, so we'll, we'll plan on that. And speaking of battery energy storage systems, we did get a, a referral really from North Salem to amend their town code to prohibit some types of battery energy storage systems. Again, I'd look, looking at it a little bit, I, I think we send our normal no comment letter back to the town board, so I'd need a motion from Charlene. Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, and so I'll, well, Judd will draft the letter and, and we'll get a letter back on that that basically says we don't have a comment. And the other thing, Richfield, Connecticut is, is also amending a code, so again, something that was referred to us to expand an area. This is an area that would allow more multifamily housing. Again, I don't see that it has anything directly to us, so again, I think a no comment memo, so I'd look for a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.